Thank you. We want to welcome everyone to the special Centerville City Council meeting being held here on January fourteenth, Centerville City Hall. This is specifically denied of one item meeting, a discussion of land use planning. But you got your all eight and so I'll just say the names of people. I'll let you say all five council members are present for the record. So thank you, the council for being here. Thank you for staff, be dear visitors as well too. So we want to give this chance before we finish up our general plan in April time or so. And our discussion we had back on November nineteenth. We got a nice overview from where someone was at on our plan. But we specifically denied on discussed land use planning. We started into that a bit and I kind of halted that conversation. Whether it was polite or rude, who knows, but we tried to move on to other things.
Timing.
Okay, so tonight we'll do land use planning. So but really quick, so this is going to be a council discussion about our thoughts on land use planning. But from the heads here at the table, is there anything that update in regards to specifically land use planning since November nineteenth and where we're at on things? So I'll turn it over to you two.
As far as Chris and Mike. As far as the land use plan, we made no shift. We didn't get any feedback as to make any adjustments to land use. I know we discussed some, but it was all tempted. We made no adjustments to that land use plan.
And then we do have obviously the open house on the thirtieth for the public to come, be able to add even more commentary. You also saw Chris has put up these boards outside. Those will be up to some dots to provide comments. We also have some samples out there for anybody to fill out a survey if they don't have access to a computer. And if there's a city that wants to fill that form out, drop it in the box and they'll pick that up. So there's an alternative option for them. Bring up that survey document. And I'm doing that thirtieth and then we'll collect those on the thirtieth and they'll take that day there. So that will be the thirtieth from six to eight.
So are these just excuse me, out on the thirtieth or they're going to be out from now?
They'll be out here from now until now.
Oh, good.
What are we doing to advertise this? So people know these signs are on.
Bryce. How are we advertising for the open house?
So they're scheduled posts that go on socials. We're using a lot of work and all. Off to our school, the summer, we hope we're supposed to build fair. Maybe one.
No, I was just wondering what we've done.
Have we made our separate committees aware? So maybe they are also there. Well, commissions, trails, Whittaker, tree board, landmarks. Parks and Rec.
What about sticking out one of those like notice signs? Whenever you stick out one of those notice signs, people actually get attention to them. Could we stick one in front of City Hall? So people might go, oh wow, that's interesting and get out and come and go see.
I mean, City Hall's road is pretty good my day and night.
But they'll see that there's a notice that they draw them to the website and say, well, what would be noticed at City Hall versus similar to location?
So that's a little over two weeks, so sixth to eighth that evening.
Yeah, we plan to be here, Chris and myself, Samuel will be here. Clearly, you can't be all up and be here if you want to. Feel comments, questions, sponsor people to come talk to us if they don't feel comfortable, whatever the case may be, we'll be knowing around. So I think ourselves available.
And what we see out there, it looks similar to what we had our package there, but.
Yeah, there's slight adjustments just because we won't have somebody here for the next two weeks. So we made adjustments. So it'll be a little bit more intuitive. And people would have the answers to their questions by looking at the boards. We made some adjustments for that purpose.
Would we bring, would we have maybe additional material on the thirtieth as well, do you think?
Yeah, we we're gonna hold off on the focus areas, but we're gonna hold to these and then there's additional stuff online. There's two hours on every single one of those boards that lead to the material on the website or stuff.
One of the other tactics we're gonna try is we haven't seen a lot of good feedback on like videos and real stories. So one of those posts, you know, we have video. I'm sure who that's gonna be at the face of the department, but in there we'll give an incentive. We have a bunch of these glasses left. So we thought, hey, look, maybe a person will show up. Don't get your customized, I mean, well, we'll send it to the class, just to try to incentivize it to people to we make it fit.
Thank you for doing that.
Okay, well, thanks. Anything else before I start opening up the council?
I can think of the best way to leave, you know, Chris.
Okay, council. So from what you saw in your packet, what's out there, you have a future land use plan. And it's color coordinated on what these presently are, what what we're looking at in the future, the potential thing being, this is our chance, this meeting specifically for this, like I said, like I said, our chance to discuss what we see so far on the maps and what's in your mind. Your thoughts on land use planning and trying to incorporate that into the general plan. Chris will be here taking notes. Hey, well, start. Spencer, do you want to?
So I sent this to Jennifer. Jennifer, you want to pull up? It's called a presentation for lack of a better word, but I hope to accomplish tonight, just some thought amongst us as council. I've been thinking about this for a very, very long time, probably I would say as early as running for office almost four years ago, that there's been a theme in my mind. And so a lot of what we're gonna review tonight is based off of that as well as additional interviews, data collection, research, and I've tried to consolidate it, move all that, roll your eyes. Hopefully I'll speed through this, but I plan on this being a working document and process for right now. Jennifer, you can go to the next slide, but just ask you, if you have questions, write them down so I can get through it. Definitely welcome all of your input and feedback to it. And these are just kind of just Spencer's policy and planning suggestions based off of the framework or the context that we're working through. And I think the context is that and next slide is that we have certain principles that guide us in Centerville that we have talked about. We are a community that focuses on family connections, friendships. But then we're also a community that's responsible and accountable. And so those are kind of the two things to keep in mind as it relates to Centerville City principles. I'll preface this by saying that, just again, ask you to withhold any conclusions or critique, write anything down, questions you have. But also moving toward forward, I've kind of crafted this two-word theme phrase in my mind, and that's graduated continuity. So that as we think about any changes to our general plan and land use plan going forward, it isn't drastic changes that at least I'm suggesting, but there is a graduated continuity and there's a graduated continuity as it relates to uses, between uses, building heights, density buffering, it's on the next slide, Jennifer, setbacks. So there's not a what I would say a wholesale impact where you're going from a one-story, single-family home to a six-story office building right next to each other. That's not what I'm suggesting in part of this presentation. What I'm suggesting is graduated continuity. So keep that in mind. So let's go and get to the visuals. Right there in nineteen forties and fifties, those are probably pictures of my parents, my mom and my dad. They were married in the seventies and by nineteen seventy-six, in the next picture, Jennifer, you'll see if you zoom in closely, a family moving in on twelve hundred north at two eighty-seven east, you can actually see which is Barnard. You can see it stopped. And we're kind of like, I guess, in nineteen seventy-six up there and you can kind of the bottom pictures, if you zoom in closely, you'll see down to the the bottom out towards the lake, not a lot of development out there. Next slide, you'll see just our family growth. I come from a family of seven kids in the nineteen, early eighties and then by twenty twenty-four, you have to have two photos to get everybody in that, including grandkids and kids. So the question is, what does my family or our families have to do with the general plan? And I think this is a visual representation. You go through generations and there's a pretty quick exponential increase in our population growth. And so in my opinion, in my perspective, based off of our family and reproductive choices, we create growth and family growth has everything to do with the general plan. Because we're mapping out our future. So we can ask ourselves these questions. How many siblings do I have? How many siblings do my neighbors have, right? It's not just me, it's our community. How many children do I have? How many children do my neighbors have? How many grandkids or how many grandkids do my neighbors have? I purposely redacted names in our community because we know large families in our community. I'm not trying to call out names, but if we went through our connections within Centerville itself, that list would be ten times longer in redaction of family names in our community that love their families, love their grandkids and our, and our large families. So let's get into kind of some nitty gritty. If you, the top one matrix is if you took the Summer Hayes family and modeled that out from the population growth standpoint, every, let's say forty years is a generation. So I used forty-five to eighty-five, two thousand twenty-five. And you can see the population increases on a percentage basis going forward. So they're substantial and we'll do a visual later. I recognize that a family of seven was a large family in the mid-eighties, but I will also say that I felt as a kid looking around that families of four felt small. If I had a friend that had four kids, that was a small family. Average families to me felt five and six kids. That's just my perspective and that may be off base, but that's my perspective. So my example two, I've tried to be more conservative in trying to calculate population growth percentages out into the future. So instead of a massive or a larger seven child family, I've calculated that out at a five-person family. What you'll see in the columns is that you have a beginning population pop column and a number of new families. What that is, is essentially children divided by two because you're grabbing from two separate families to create family, nuclear family units, let's say. And so that's the model that I created. I've chatted with a couple of demographers at the University of Utah, just to make sure that I think this is sound. This is just natural population growth. We're not talking about anything else besides just natural population growth. So on the next slide, what this is, is that example two, the more conservative approach, I've just tried to help us visualize what that means over the, those first few generations, not accounting to even future generations. So really the point is, is whether we as Centerville residents are willing to verbalize it or not. My perception is that we're definitely pro-growth because we're pro-family. I think you can't separate those two in my opinion. So using that same model, you use the nineteen eighty census. Population of Centerville was just over eight thousand residents. And if you use the conservative population modeling that I used in the previous matrix, you see that in twenty twenty, we should have been at about over nineteen and a half thousand people, nineteen five. Whereas the actual population in twenty twenty, based off the census, was sixteen thousand eight hundred, sixteen thousand nine hundred-ish. Which means we're short. We have in that time span, in the next slide, you'll see that we have burdened other communities, other cities by effectively twenty-seven hundred people. And using the updated family unit size in that year, we were short housing inventory in our city by nearly six hundred and eighty units. So we have a lot of demand, which is had not supplied, we have a shortage of that units. So again, we're this, we're going back, I'm going back to this principle in Centerville that we're accountable, responsible. We don't expect others to do something that we're not willing to do ourselves. Brian, you're laughing. I'm not sure what that is, but in my perspective, we as a city shouldn't expect other communities to provide housing for population growth that we caused by our own reproductive and family choices. And I say that because it stands to reason that for every person that is at this point in their lives anti growth, and again, I'm saying family-centered growth, there is that same individual in Farmington, Kay'sville, Layton, go to Syracuse and on Northland, even to Tremont. If you ask residents in Tremont, they will most likely say, or there are many that would say, my city is maxed out. I am sick and tired of this growth. My city is not the same as it is anymore. I wanted to stay the same. And so in my mind, again, this is Spencer's perspective, you can move a couple of slides, Jennifer, that managing our growth isn't just a theoretical exercise, it's a real, genuine, serious, practical issue that we, we need to address as policymakers. So what I've done is essentially overlaid that population growth chart with housing typology. The only way that you can fit the people that we need to fit in our city is you go from that nineteen forty-five, let's call it a small bungalow to the eighties-ish, you know, Rambler or two-story to now we're getting into a a more dense situation. We, that there's, that's the option. Otherwise, we're burdening other cities. Again, I don't think that's accountable or responsible. And it also, we can talk about burdens on infrastructure, on commute times for accessibility to jobs in major employment centers. The second thing that I want to talk about is how growth and zoning policies will impact pricing and affordability. So in our free market system, price is a function of demand and supply. So there's a notion in economics, all things being equal. So if demand increases, prices increase, or if demand or supply is restricted, price also increases. But if demand and supply, if demand increases and supply is restricted, we're compounding that problem even more. So as a point of reference, as of the end of twenty twenty-three, Utah's home median home price was five hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. Based off of our individual income per capita in Utah, sixty-three thousand on the next slide. That makes Utah the third least affordable state in the nation, behind California and Hawaii. Not something that we definitely aspire to. And again, this equation and the focus that I have tonight is on the pricing side, on from a demand side, we have created more demand than we have ability to supply based off of what we've done in our city. We're six hundred and seventy-nine housing units deficient based off of these assumptions, right? This doesn't account for any external growth pressures. And I purposely done that because I'm not a growth for girls' sakes. I never have tried to communicate that as such. I've always said it's a family-centered growth pattern. How do we manage family-centered growth? So let's talk about supply. We've already talked about demand supply. So as of yesterday on the MLS, we have in terms of newish inventory in Centerville, four units built after twenty twenty on the market and thirty-one total units for sale in Centerville. That includes single-family homes, condos, townhomes. Also, as of yesterday, we have three rental units available in Legacy Trail, seven in Legacy Crossing and five other basement or other home rentals that are out on the market. So forty-six units that are available, but only really fifteen of them, because the homes that are for sale are reasonably occupied. There's also policy that has constrained supply. So back in twenty-seven, near the end of twenty seventeen, there was an adjustment in the RM density that was adjusted so that anything over six units per acre was designated as residential high. So anything that ranges from six point oh five to eight is residential high in our, as it stands in our zone code right now. So what happens when we constrain our supply? Well, well, when we do, when we take policy measures like that, we have outsized supply constraints. There is also a discontinuity in development. So if we take it to the example of the lane, the lane is a single-family development that occurred because the zoning had already been changed. It's pitched between commercial very high and commercial, what we'll call now residential high based off of the current zoning current. And this weird dynamic that I don't think was intended to be that way, it just was a natural result of that zoning change. And also by changing that units per acre, it's restricting redevelopment or remodeling work. It's a disincentive for an existing property owner to maintain an ancient property. It's inadvertent blind essentially is what it is. You're not going to have an older, let's say an apex that gets reduced down in size from a zoning code, going to redevelop down to the six unit. That there's just no incentive to do that. So a landlord is going to say, what do I do except for just sit? So let's talk about affordability. So affordability is directly tied to wages. So I'm, I'm using our city employee compensation schedule as a basis for this discussion. And we, but we could use the same methodology for other frontline workers, nurses, teachers, construction workers, manufacturers. So we've all seen this before. This is our compensation schedule. The highlighted ones are the mean income level and the median income level, just so that we have two averages. So if you, on the next slide, on the bottom of it, because that's this compensation schedule continued, what I did is an average of an average. I took the mean city annual gross income and the median, and I took the average of those, which is about just over seventy-two thousand dollars. So on a monthly gross income, that's about six thousand dollars. So from an affordability as it relates to housing, you take an underwriting, a lender standard, which is twenty-eight percent of your gross monthly income. It should, your principal interest taxes shouldn't be more than twenty-eight percent of that number. Which means that at the average city employee, and again, you can relate this to other residents in our city who are these frontline workers, they have about seventeen hundred dollars to utilize for housing. As it relates to property taxes, we know what the mill rate is. So on the bottom portion of that, that mill rate is the existing mill rate. It's about a hundred and thirty-five dollars in property taxes for that for that payment amount. And then for homeowners insurance, I contacted one of our more reputable insurance agents and it's about paid seven, seventeen hundred basis points in insurance based off of the purchase price. So using that data on the next page, we can calculate or derive a purchase price. So using that monthly loan payment amount and based off of today's interest rates, our average employee in our city can afford, or a lender will only loan them about two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. Assuming that they've been able to save up almost fifty-seven thousand dollars for the down payment to avoid primary mortgage insurance. So using that same data off of the MLS, there are only six units for sale in Centerville that our average city employee can afford based off of those income measures. And they're available. Are they fantastic? No. So but that begs the question, what's obtainable and what's affordable? And in each instance, each one of those housing types are attached units. And this includes all of those other types of workers and residents in our city. So some additional examples beyond even that purchase price, there's only let's see, eleven units up to four hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. Everything else in Centerville is over that price range. So the summary of affordability is number one, we have supply constraints based off of our current land use plan and our current zoning code. And then we already have the naturally high demand pressures based off of our family growth patterns, which it has that double-pronged approach, in my opinion, of significant prices. And and we control prices, not necessarily, but a lot of these things, at least from the demand side, or the supply side, we can control. And I guess if we want to institute a one-child policy like China, we can control demand. I don't think we're in a position to do that, but supply side, maybe there's something to do. And that's what the suggestions I'm gonna make. So based off of all this, what's next? As a council member, as a parent, as a neighbor, I personally feel duty-bound to create policy that provides the ability for additional housing units in our city. And again, like I said, we can't control pricing per se, but one of the parts of the equation is to provide supply. And I would hope that we can do that. I've pulled some language from our current general plan that is consistent with suggested policy actions. And I've highlighted some of that verbiage and some of that is that the plan is kept up to date and we assure adequate supply for future population, that we provide a variety of housing options and we can discuss that because there's a lot of people that want different types of housing depending on their life situation. Whether you're a young, single person or a young married couple, or you're a retiree or a divorcee or a widower or a stereotypical family. I think there's a lot of different housing options that we should be providing. And that we give it consideration to ongoing changes and circumstances within our team. So back to what, how I let out, and this is kind of two-pronged. First off is conceptual planning suggestions. And then the second part is specific planning suggestions. So again, I'm going back to this notion of graduated continuity. So when we think about graduated continuity, first, I, I want to be helpful for the community general in generalized, we communicate in terms of density. I don't believe, based off of community engagement, that subjective measures that we use right now or designations of density are helpful. RL, RM, RH. When somebody says it's residential high, that isn't a equal definition in a lot of people's minds. My mother-in-law hears about a zoning change and she asks if there is a high-rise apartment growing in on Four Hundred West because she hears residential high. So instead, my suggestion policy is that we institute objective measures of density. So that as staff or we or anybody else talks about density in our city moving forward, they are talking about R four, R six, R eight. It is a measurable, definable number so that when there is a public notice, we all know what that means. And they can also go visit another neighboring neighborhood to say, oh, okay, this is what R six looks like. How does that? How will that reflect in that other location? I've already talked about it, graduated continuity transition between uses, graduated continuity with building heights. If we have our single family, I think our height restriction, Lisa, correct me or Mike, if I'm wrong, I think it's thirty-five as it stands. So if we're going to go up in maybe some intensity of use, are we saying we go to seventy-five? I don't think we should, but maybe forty-five or forty, some graduated continuity as it relates to heights. And I will also say we should be mindful that that's accounted for natural grade. The Hofoka property is an interesting one because if you go to the Hofoka property, which is next to the church off of Porter Lane, and they've, if you see that, they've built up their site around the existing home by like six feet. So I want to be careful from a policymaking standpoint. So I want to be careful from a policymaking standpoint as we work with our staff to say, look, we're talking about a height from a natural grade, not from a built-up grade. Because the public will say, well, that was a bait and switch, right? So I want to make sure that we're cognizant of that. I would say that we're graduated continuity and density. So if we're talking or looking at our general plan, and there is an R-six, or an R-current, R-eight, or R-ten, or twelve, we're also taking measured steps to address our, uh, population increase, as well as buffering. You know, one of the questions when the hive came was, I asked Corey specifically on the north side of the hive, what is the setback of that, which are, those are actually detached single-family residents on the north side. What is the setback for that? And it was the equal setback to the single-family residence. So you, you had a common denominator went to the single-family residence. So there's a mindfulness of your next-door neighbors, uh, as well as setbacks. So we also need to keep in mind improvements for our infrastructure, road, water drainage, how that gets impacted by our potential decision-making. I think we need to be mindful of our historic preservation. I'm thinking of, uh, a great example would be maybe the home that's on four hundred West and about seven hundred. There's, there's a great historic home there. So I want to be mindful that we still have great, uh, potential architecture in the city and, and let's try and preserve some of that. Um, maximizing deep lots. We have a lot of deep lots in the city that may not be accessible on a redevelopment project. So we can talk about infill lots. I know flag lots is a dirty word, so maybe they're called infills. Um, we can talk about density incentives relative to affordability, where we can say, hey, developer, if you build, we'll, we'll allow you to build more units so long as they meet and, uh, the purchase price meets, or the rent price meets a income level as it relates to median, uh, income levels in our, in, uh, individual. And then the last one I have are incentives for creating a cohesive development. Um, from a developer's perspective, you will see, and as just residents, you'll see there are sometimes one C, two C infill developments. I think that there's an opportunity that if someone assembles a group of a number of parcels for a larger cohesive development, we actually end up with better buffering, better setbacks, better open space, uh, in doing that. So maybe there is a way, and staff can help us with this, um, create some pathway for, uh, those types of developments. Um, so now I've got specific land use modification suggestions. I've got triple X, uh, triple question marks in that. Because these are, again, this is a working session. These are all on the table. Um, but these are suggestions, and I also don't put, as it relates to attached housing, a density number to it, because I don't feel like we're ready to do that yet. I think we want to identify potential locations within our city where number one, it makes sense to do that. Uh, and then we can talk about what that density is, uh, going forward. So we talked about it. I, I like the idea from a commercial infill standpoint. We talked about these massive sea of parking areas. What can we do with those? Are they completely underutilized? Are they utilized? I think there's an opportunity on, in the marketplace, the thoroughfare, transecting, Target, Kohl's, Home Depot. Either with more business for our property tax base and/or some housing in those. Same with Walmart. Can you add a couple more pads between the inline shops and the big box on the, on the far north side? Uh, and are there others out there? I just put that as a question. Um, so attached housing adjacency to primary arterial streets. So, uh, I think there's an opportunity in certain specific areas of our city that have an appropriate frontage to streets. And I'll just lay the first one out there because someone's going to say, well, Spencer, do you want this to happen right behind you? So I'm going to lay this out there that yes, I do. And I would say the southwest corner of Main and Porter Lane, right behind my own home. I could see that as a great place for townhomes. That would front along there, would be a great street front. They would be directly behind me and I would go up through that. In fact, if somebody wants to assemble those parcels and I develop them, fantastic. Um, I also think that there's an opportunity on, and this is gonna hit Gina's, uh, life here. I actually think there's a type of one here, but this would be the west side of Main Street between Stewart, not Taylor Elementary, Stewart Elementary and Fesbrook. So you have this area between Stewart Elementary going south that would connect or be cohesive with Fesbrook. That's another potential. Uh, South Main Street, you know, right now it's zoned only as commercial businesses. Do we want to do a residential overlay? I think a residential overlay has the opportunity to bring vibrancy and a little more, uh, a better feel to our mainstream. That's my, that's my personal opinion. Um, I think there's opportunity, we've seen it already, Porter Lane, west of four hundred West, absolutely. Like the Hofoca property should be in line with Porter Walden Townhomes. Like, there's no reason why that should be zoned, single-family residence. Again, in my, uh, in my opinion. Uh, I think there's an opportunity on the south side of Parish Lane between Main Street and four hundred West. You already have Granite Townhomes. You have a duplex on the corner of four hundred East and Parish. So there's maybe an opportunity there. Uh, north side of Chase Lane, between Main Street and four hundred West, I don't know what there is. Uh, there's some really deep lots through there, um, that are underutilized. That may be an opportunity. Twenty-one fifty North, Lund Lane, four hundred West, south of Porter Lane, and other four hundred West locations or north of Parish and Chase, I don't know, infill development. Again, these are, this is for us to, to think about. Uh, complimentary use and density types, that's the next one. What do we feel about the DI side? What is the, like, the long-term vision for that parcel? Are we just assuming that the current owner is gonna perpetually be the DI, or do we want something that is going to guide the future of that side in a mixed-use type? So we, frankly, we're not getting any, uh, sales tax, uh, generation there. Can we rezone that property so that there is maybe some housing component as well as commercial component on that one? I would say that as we look towards the future, um, again, this hits home for me. This is close to my home and I'm comfortable with it. Four hundred West, south of Porter Lane, on the Battlefield City border, you've got some great developments. Country Springs is a great development that people love. Um, and you have Pages Place right there. You could, in my mind, that makes a lot of sense to create some continuity of attached housing from Porter Lane all the way to the Battlefield border. We would have to address some road alignment issues that, so that there's some consistency in design, um, but that one would be, so again, others. Uh, and then alignment, I think the land use plan, and Chris, you may need to update it because you just don't have access to it, but it's right now east of Taylor Elementary. It's noted as single-family residences. I think those are all, I just drove by there today. They're all attached housing through there, but it's not reflected on the map. Uh, south side of Parish Lane, again, between Main Street and four hundred East. We should think about duplexes and fourplexes in existing neighborhoods. Um, and how do we address those? There's a parcel southwest of the Bamberger condos that I think if you did a complimentary uh, type of a product, it fits really well in there. Um, and then others, uh, the southwest, uh, corner of four hundred East and Pages. That one is also shown as, uh, uh, residential rather than its current commercial. So we can, and we can discuss that as well. Uh, that's where the Ace Hardware is at. It's noted in the land use plan as residential. I don't know if we want that to go residential or if we want to keep it commercial.
That's just like miserable.
Okay, so, but that's, yeah, and again, this is, again, me just trying to have an open discussion and trying to be specific about it, because if we're not specific, then we're just talking in specific generalities, which I don't think is very, so. Thanks for making it to the end of my presentation. Again, I, if, take notes, if you want to pepper me with critique and questions, I'm open to that. Um, or if you have other ideas that you brought, chat about those. Yeah, you look like you're on ABC.
Just one question for you. On your population growth and your demographics, did you consider that not, not that it would make a huge difference, but eventually the people start passing away.
Yes, so it, yeah, so if you go back up to that, there's the final column is a population decrease. Uh, let's see, go up one more. Yeah, so then the last column is population decrease. So the people that were born in those two previous generations start falling off. So yes, the answer is yes.
I, I really appreciate all the work that you've done. I appreciate the specificity because I think that you're exactly right. We have to start discussing this as a parent of adult children who are now looking to buy homes. And I still have an eight-year-old at home. I, that is my biggest worry for them is homeownership. And we talked about it in LPC yesterday. They, the legislature is going so far as to, um, and this was, uh, broadcast through Utah League of Cities and Towns. But they're going so far as saying, hey, we're not just worried about, like, maybe, here's an example that got brought up. Detached ADs, which is not allowed in Centerville right now. We're not just worried about that. We're actually worried about whether or not they can own the high-density housing. And I think that this is, this is a moment where, um, I, one of the reasons I ran into City Council is I was very concerned that we are planning for the future. That was, that was a big push for me during my campaign, was that we get this general plan. So for me, this is, I am so excited that we're to this point. Um, I do think we have to carefully plan and think about how we provide housing, because this is a statewide problem. Legislature isn't, isn't hitting this up because Centerville's the only one that's saying, no, I don't want it in my community. Um, so I do think this is, I thank you for all of your work. I really appreciate it.
So let me be the second to say, appreciate always. And, uh, with, with facts and figures, which I really appreciate. So we can, we can, we can discuss housing through the whole time we have tonight. Uh, I'm fine with that, but it's, I appreciated Spencer bringing it back to four or five places within the city where it was more than just housing. That would, well, this is a, with the land use discussion, and he, and he brought up, uh, you know, other uses of our land as well too. I mean, we, we face a big problem land use-wise because what, what are we, four by two and a half miles or whatever? And, and we know that we're, we're running out of land. And so I'm not basing this with facts and figures like all the hours and weeks and months you put into it, but no matter what we do, uh, we're gonna run out of housing. If you look at continued population growth, unless you have a massive god-forgiven nuclear bomb or disease that kills people off, we're gonna run out of housing. And, and, um, so, uh, we could, we, we can, we can go all, all multifamily, uh, and we're still gonna run out of housing, in my opinion. I mean, so, so it's designing a, a community with land use with all factions involved. And, uh, and I, and I think you're saying that, that as well too. And so, um, uh, and, and part of what, uh, he didn't build in people wanting to build to a city. I'm gonna speak to that being, when I say as an outsider, as I, as I ran for office, I would claim, well, my uncle and aunt grew up here. They were one of the original Centerville people, even though I was a Mill Creek Holiday cast-off, okay? For one reason I came this way, because Mill Creek Holiday is not what it was when I grew up. It's not the area that fits family conservative values like Centerville. Well, that's why my wife and I came here.
I think that's an important point too. I, I don't want to come across that I don't support that we, we have always had a small-town feel, and part of that is probably maybe a little bit of the geography, because we are kind of small. Um, but I do think, I do think you bring up a good point, Spencer, on, um, the specificity in the zone, that we don't just say low, medium, high. It is confusing, um, because, because of that. And so I think-
If you remember, one of the cottage me's, I printed off examples and I, without telling people, I said, tell me what this is. Is it residential low, medium, or high? And almost, ex, almost everybody got it wrong. Because they would look at things and they would say, that's not residential high. That's maybe medium, maybe low. Because they didn't understand the ordinance that was in place versus what was actually built.
But I think that might be a good place to start with, like, is, I mean, I guess I'd like to know what other council members and the mayor feel. I mean, we talk about specific units for, per acre. I, I mean, how, how high is appropriate? And I, one, one thing, um, maybe, no, I didn't see it. I don't remember. Maybe I missed it. I mean, we haven't talked about the west side, and that is in Chris's work to, to do some housing there. I, I mean, can we start there and maybe say, you know, how high can it go and still, and still keep? How do we keep our small-town community feeling?
Can I interject with that?
Yes.
As we talk with the public, most people are like, oh, yeah, yeah, the west side. It, it's more or less forgotten by most people. So if, if there is a spot to focus on a little bit more of, uh, what, using the existing terms, a high-density approach, that's where it makes a lot of sense. If we shift over-
Let's not use like R-twenty.
That's where I was about to go. What do we shift onto? What does that high density mean? Well, UTA around UDX, uh, Bus Rapid Transit stations, they usually look for fifteen at a minimum. Fifteen units to the acre at a minimum, which is essentially a townhome. Twelve to fifteen using townhome. You can start to get into low-intensity cottages, uh, like condo-esque type problem with fifteen, but more often than not with the townhome.
And to Chris's point, you can get a really good-looking townhome right here that is twelve units per acre, and people will feel, their feeling is that's not high density. Again, we're going to these object, uh, subjective terms. They'll say that and say, yeah, that's, that's medium density, but it's R-twelve.
For, for frontrunner station, you now increase that density is what UTA typically looks for. Either commercially or some other uses can be involved in that, but then you look at like a thirty units to the acres or low. And that's basically typical block-up garden apartment, three to four stories.
So, so in our city, some good examples of this would be, so Garden View Townhomes, those are the townhomes north of Colonial Lumber. Those are about ten and a half units per acre. So that's a, that's a, just so, just so you know, what-
But, but let me ask this. Is, is that because it, those are renting units? And it, and it could be. Um, I think the thing we really-
I rented for-
I don't have a problem. I do not have a problem with renting, but sometimes renting does create, uh, like, just a very transient neighborhood that doesn't always, you don't always know who your neighbors are. And so-
Yeah, the, the tiny townhomes. So that's on the other side of the tiny condos. Those are ten and a half units per acre, and that's a, that's actually-
That's a really nice-
That's actually one of the examples I gave in that overlay of the chart. That's one of those examples. So that's ten. Again, these are very rough Spencer calculations based off Google Earth. Um, but like, let's take the Grand Square Townhomes on Parish Lane. Those are a great product. Those are almost seven units per acre.
Yeah, I bet you're right. Um, I can, I can maybe just touch on Fesbrook a little bit. I, I don't have any data to back this up, but just having been in that neighborhood for the last twenty-two years and and, well, actually, it's been twenty-six because we had part of that, part of that condo being in our neighborhood in our first house, and then the other half was in our neighborhood in the second house. And, um, now the whole thing is in, is in our board boundaries. And I, I feel like that those are becoming more, they're all obviously individually owned, but I feel like the families are staying longer. And probably this is an affordability issue. And, and there are quite a few older people that live in them, and that's where they've retired to. But it's a really old community, but it's, I mean, people still want to live there. There's a lot of demand for it. It has a lot of open space. So, I mean, I think that is a well-done-
It's kind of what my-
I don't know what the-
My point was if you can assemble some larger parts, if, if you can incentivize a someone to purchase a number of parcels to create a development like that, I, I want to incentivize that if at all possible.
Yeah. So I'd like just a few minutes, because obviously Spencer knows I'm gonna rebuttal him on a lot of this. And just remember-
I was open to that.
We're friends.
I said.
We're friends and, and you know, since you got in, a lot of people have said, and I've been. Things Spencer are really more like than you think we would be. On this one, this is probably where we're not so far away. And I just like.
We're not.
I were so, well, we're not, you know, I would say so, maybe what you don't know is that's how the zoning used to be, R two, R four, R six. They took it away. And I was not happy with that. They didn't, said it didn't work and they didn't like it. I went to Cory and that was years. I mean, that was a lot of years ago, but it did used to be that way and they did take it away. And it was a little frustrating because there were properties that were R two, that were. Intermingled around a little bit. And I'm like, you kind of took this away from people that had bought R two property. But so that, on that, that part, I can, I can go with you. I think that that would be. Cause there have been times when people have came in and the reason that we lowered from eight to six was actually Cory's suggestion. Because there were a lot of places coming that we weren't comfortable with eight. It used to be that the state. It, when it was conditional use, we kind of had a right to say yes or no, we like it. And then the state changed the rules. And Cory came to us and he said, they changed them. You can't tell somebody no now. If it's conditional use. You can give them the problems, they fix it and they get the eight. You cannot tell them. Where years ago, it used to be you could say, no, the neighbors don't want it. And that was all you had to take. So, um, we changed it to something we felt like we were comfortable with. Cause in my opinion, we were telling people no, but we shouldn't be telling no. But yet, we weren't comfortable with eight. So I'm like, we're gonna say yes a lot more to six. Or no to everybody. So that was where we changed. I think he said something that was great when he said, you change this very much. That's where I came in. And I went by a land scene and I've been to almost every door here in Centerville. If this were put on the ballot, we all pretty much know where the people would come in on it. And I feel like we are elected to represent the people. And the people that wanna move to Centerville don't get to vote for us. It's the people that are here. And then I'd like to know how many brothers and sisters. Okay, now wait a minute. I gave you all your turn and I didn't.
Do you want me to answer that question?
I'd like to ask the question. How many brothers and sisters live here in Centerville?
None.
Okay, so for that, for you to say, I have kids, they don't all live here in Centerville, not because there wasn't a place for them to live. Because their, their husband works down in Provo, so they live down in San Antonio. So I think when you say, well, I have this many people, we've got this many kids and we've got to have this many housing, all those kids don't wanna stay here. But there are people that maybe came from you, uh, the flip side of that, this is why I say, uh, the legislature is talking about this because we're not the only community. Right. That is, but what about that person that grew up in Provo that works in Salt Lake? I agree with that, but for, for the way it was figured, I'm like. I don't know to say, well, we've got this many people here and they're gonna have this many kids. Because then we're gonna be LA in a hundred years. I mean, is that really what we want for Centerville? That's not what I was elected for, was that.
As long as we continue to have choices to have kids.
Well, but, but, and I don't think we've put them all into towns that didn't want them. I mean. My relatives all came from Syracuse up there and they moved out. They're still single-family homes, but they have moved out. Into the farm fields up there. You've got Saratoga Springs, you've got your towns that are coming. I think new towns will have to come because. There isn't gonna be enough room or we're, or what we have now. Isn't gonna be there. And, and I, and here's my other thing is. You can't change this very much because I came in on that. And I can tell you that if you change this drastically, all that will happen is the next election. You're gonna have all super, super, super conservative coming in and they're gonna change it back lower to what it is today.
Yeah, and, and, and that's why we've taken this approach. The, the last thing that we want to do is get you all moved from council.
Right.
So we're taking steps in the direction that. Public would still feel comfortable and, and that's why the approach of. Let's relook at what's on the west side, cause again, residents. We'll get to that, but let me finish this and then I'll ask you why you're shaking your head no. We look at the west side and redevelop the west side because the state is forcing you to have private income housing. And for the most part, it's single families throughout the east side. And in order to preserve the character and culture, to your point. If we leave the east side predominantly alone and focus on that west side. You accomplish the state's requirements and you still give place for. Lower-income homes, like children that are living with you or whatever. Someplace in Centerville. Um, i- if, if I might take the example he shared. And let's not look at Centerville directly. Let's look at Utah because essentially we're one giant community. Utah's the bucket. Most of your family is probably still in Utah. There's gonna be some people that move out of state, but for the most part, people love Utah. Maybe not Centerville, maybe they like Salt Lake instead. It doesn't matter, but essentially the bucket is Utah. And it's gonna move back and forth and Centerville's fairly bounded. But there's still a piece of that, that Centerville has to accomplish as, as pushed by the state. But just to, to generalize that. Now, with that said, you, you shook your head a lot and I wanna.
So Chris, can I just answer the questions that.
Oh, yeah, yeah, sorry.
Asked me. So you're talking about um, drastic change. I don't think what I'm suggesting is drastic. Again, I haven't even put numbers associated with densities. I'm just offering suggestions. That reflect natural population.
I don't think you have either. I mean.
And it would be incredibly different. I mean, I, that's why, so maybe we could start on the west side because. Because I think we'd all maybe be a little more comfortable with higher densities there, but, but I do agree that.
But there's some opportunities even within.
There should have at least be a discussion with, you know.
So, so in answer to your question, uh, and your comment about elections. I was very open and public about family-centered growth. Not growth for growth's sake, family-centered growth. In that election, I had two hundred, two thousand eight hundred seventy-five votes. The next nearest competitor was two thousand ninety. So that's a pretty substantial mandate. Gina was even more than me. So to say that the community. Isn't, uh, at least in some, some small measure, they know, they knew who I, they were voting for when they voted for me because I was very open to that. Well, you can disagree. Let me just finish my thought. And that is, I think the public. Our Centerville City residents knew what they were getting into. They knew when they elected me, at least if they read my website and went to. Six cottage meetings and saw all my flyers.
I can, I can attest to that.
We need to manage responsibly our family-centered growth, period, end of story. As it relates to Gina's comments and Chris's comments on the state. Again, I'm saying, I'm kind of putting Centerville on an island, as it were, in this case study. Because you can put every city on its island and because every city is pushing back on density and growth. The state is putting themselves in a position to say, you guys all agree that affordability and housing supply is a problem. But nobody wants to be accountable for it. And so we're gonna force you on it. I'm just trying to say, let's own up to it as this, as a city.
Do you know how many homes have been approved to be built that aren't being built?
In, no, no, I wanna ask in Centerville. Where, how, what is that number in Centerville?
I'm not saying in Centerville, but when you're talking about affordability. In, in Utah and I mean. There, there is.
When my daughter, when my daughter, Robin, was looking for a place to purchase. She is a caregiver, a nurse at Primary Children's at the time. It was either Syracuse or out in Magna were potential affordability. But in a dual-income family. Luckily, they actually found something in North Salt Lake. It was an attached condo, three-story condo. I don't want my children's quality of life being dictated by a forty-five-minute commute that will become an hour commute that will become an hour fifteen. That's happened in other areas throughout our country.
And, and she bring up, uh, right there, that comment there, something that. As I toured the county, looking for third-party sales tax and was talking to some of the county commissioners, other managers. Why we need, when we talk about land use, we're, it's more than just how home building. Why we need commercial development in those areas too, so they don't have to have the commute to Salt Lake City. Okay, uh, so they can work in their own communities. Uh, and so we're talking more about just in the housing here. So the, we, we're talking commercial development as well too.
So those are my answers. Those are my answers to your question.
This concept, I, I'm not disagreeing with you, but also this concept of, well, they just gotta spread out. The, the problem is, is we do have finite resources, including land, and whether or not you can get water, but as long as we continue to spread. It, it is also part of the unaffordability.
Especially with Davis County with us being what, the second smallest landmass of all the counties in the state with the third highest population, something like that.
And that's the other thing you have to think about water. How much water do we have? I mean, you can't, you can't. Give it all the density you want if you don't have enough water for the people that you're. But we could also consider some options on landscaping. Here, here's an example of a recent neighbor of mine reaching out to me. Very frustrated with some of our ordinances and not adding, if this is a, but it is a land use issue. But wanted to put a pool, they need, their pool was broken. They wanted to just put it back in and. I don't know if you were involved in that, or I think it was just before you came on. Because of our ordinances, the way they are, they couldn't restore the pool. It was, they were a little too close to the property line. Now that was, uh, that was a real issue because that, we don't dictate that. That is, it was, you know, the P U E, but, but also, um. You know, there, we could, we could change some of our ordinances to say, hey, if you can manage. Your drainage appropriately, and it can be engineered, it costs money, but. They don't want grass in their backyard and that is a way to conserve water. I mean, I do think there's some other things we could be looking at. That would also help to just conserve those finite resources. It's true, but what did they tell us when we were looking at this? Like, the, the landscape normally is five percent of the water used. That's not true.
That's very much true.
That is not even. I can't remember what was told. I was shocked that it wasn't higher. It's more like forty-five percent or higher. The, our agricultural and secondary use in the state is more than.
Take agriculture out, it's, it's.
Yeah.
Is, is irrigation to yards. And if you look at multifamily versus single-family, you start to talk. Talk about lots of things like that per capita. The usage of water in single-family homes is. Crazy when it comes to the outside use. And it's because of irrigation. It is one of the biggest water sucks in Utah. And, and, and this is something that. Uh, the state is pushing through the water use element. We're doing that as part of this general plan update. Specifically because you go out, drive down the street and it's grass, 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 grass. And how many people use their front yard? Not many. So is it just for a beautification thing and we're just wasting water on it? And a lot of people aren't even educated on how to water. I have a neighbor who waters five days a week. Typically, you only need two, maybe three days of that, that's coming from landscape architecture. That's it. And they'll also water for longer than they need. So we have a huge waste as far as that's concerned. So a, a minimal change for the state. Could reallocate how we use our water. And that's what the state is forcing because we're not changing fast enough. And we have run out of water, but if we use our water better instead of just. I mean, some people have spray heads or buses and then I'll check them and it's just shooting out in the streets like, you're blowing water.
But Chris, when you talked about land use and everybody else here, this could extend with maybe a little Pollyannaish, but. I sat with the, the former Speaker of the House, uh, and I talked about agricultural in Davis County. It's just agricultural. We're not gonna have agriculture, but agriculture. For a state that is, a state that is built on self-sufficiency. If we're gonna eliminate everything because we're putting in commercial and residential. You get one trucker strike and you don't have any supplies in your grocery store.
Yeah.
We're, 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 we're very limited in foresight by the legislature. On what we need natural resources-wise as well too.
I agree.
Being able to have agriculture as well.
But, but, but when we're talking agriculture in Utah, we're not talking food. Or humans.
I know.
Right, the agriculture is. Yeah.
And that's like eighty-two percent of our crop in Utah.
Right, I'll give you that.
Chris, so, so I, I just wanted to answer Robin's question, but you were going to, right. Uh, I would like an opportunity to speak, actually.
Because I also, um, did a little research. I did not create a PowerPoint. Now that I saw yours, I am totally impressed by your work. Thank you for putting that together. I too came from a, a family of seven, uh, moved here in eighty-three. Uh, grew up on the north end of town and. My neighborhood's changed. That neighborhood has changed significantly since that time. I don't have, uh, the record of, uh, having those votes to give me a mandate. But what I do have is a knowledge of the people that I grew up and grew to love. The, the, the parents, the families of, of, uh, those that grew up, I grew up around. And many of those people, most of those people. Uh, former mayors included, Mayor Todd was in my neighborhood, uh, wanted to maintain the, uh. Centerville as it was. I'm gonna read from the current general plan. Uh, residential development, the citizens of Centerville have expressed a desire to retain a suburban residential lifestyle. These feelings have been reemphasized by community surveys done by the city. The citizens of Centerville recognize the diversity of lifestyles that exist throughout the region. However, we do not feel an obligation to provide a cross-section of those different lifestyles. Within the boundaries of our small community. Centerville has a small land area, much of which is developed. That development has predominantly been single-family residential. We desire to maintain that character of development. A lot of people that wrote that still live in this community. And I think that is important as we move forward and look at things like. Zoning that I would actually agree. Maybe we do need to lay out some more specific. Uh, definitions to those, uh, low, medium, and high density. As far as, uh. Certain areas in the, in the city, uh, just briefly touching on the, uh, west side, we wanna start over there with. That. I have, uh, significant reservations about putting more. Residential development over there. Uh, there was an article in the KSL today about, uh, the Great Salt Lake and conservation and. Strategies for the conservation of that lake and, and, uh, if, you know, people have their way. Rejuvenating that lake, the lake could come back. And, uh, those wet, those, those areas that we see on the west side, uh, west side that are dry. Could again become wet. When I was here in eighty-three, all of that land, uh, west of the freeway was, was wetlands. Actual wetlands.
But you need to.
There wasn't wetlands, so you could water ski up to the railroad track.
Yeah, but you need to remember too, I, I know it's a bit of a joke at this point, but pumps were installed.
They were.
And they are being maintained.
Yes.
I, I got the wonderful privilege of driving out there many times while I worked for Water Resources. To pour, he booked up nitrogen tanks to keep all of that from disintegrating because of the salt in the air.
And I would, those, that was a great undertaking by Governor Bangator.
Yes.
To put those in.
So while, so at some point, I mean, I think we could look, I know exactly what the level is where the pumps can be turned on.
Four to sixteen. Based on FEMA.
It's a little higher than that.
But then went way back.
Which is interesting, based upon the graph that they provided in KSL today. And I would recommend anybody to go look at it about, uh, maintaining a baseline and how they foresee that. The shoreline going back and forth based upon how many. The shoreline going back and forth, based upon how many. How much water they put back into the Great Salt Lake. So that being said, uh in the general plan does state. That in the foreseeable future, no residential development of any type should be west of I fifteen. Soil conditions or access, the threat of a rising Great Salt Lake. And isolation from the main part of the community, which is one of my main concerns. As we talk about that, those folks over there, the transient nature of an apartment complex, they, it is. Difficult to matriculate, to assimilate into the culture of the city over there. It is, and those folks have kids that are in the school system, they're in our churches. They want to be part of a community, but because of us putting them over there, it feels a little detached. And so I think that's something that we need to consider as we look at residential development over there, I think that the two, or there there's been a number of.
Why do you think they're detached though?
Because by fifteen, I fifteen is a major.
But we have other communities that are west of I fifteen. Eventually, there's gonna be a road that connects to West Farmington. Uh we have West Bountiful over there, I sort of slightly disagree with that, that it. Uh when they put the apartments in, one of Cory's biggest concerns about the apartments right by the theater. Was that they would become an island and they would be isolated. That weighed heavily on my mind when I was sitting on planning commission and we approved the other apartments. But I do think one thing that would help is, uh I really appreciate some of the things the legislature is talking about, one of which is. We actually need ownership. And the state is looking at ways to help that be that they are owner-occupied ownership, and I and I. You know, I don't agree with everything they're doing, and I think they need to leave some of it to the communities because of a lot of things that you've just brought up, but. But also, I think that there are, you know, we have a chance to plan this into it right before the state forces it. And we don't get to choose, and then we're just forced into it, one of the things that I think is on the board mayor, can you help me remember, for Grant? They talked about that there's a potential that a detached ADUs are gonna be required in every community. That is a potential bill coming. At some point.
Those are things that. The government, the state government, they are forcing. Their will upon the cities, which is ironic in the sense that they uh complain about the federal government.
Why are.
Forcing their.
But why do you think they're doing that?
Well, I think that there is a. Thought that government can fix this problem. What is that is, the problem is a housing shortage, you know that's the problem. And that being said, that is not for government. I gave you your time, and I think that's. I think that the government is not. The facility or should not be the. The main actor in trying to fix this problem, and it is a problem. And the problem stems from developers that have chosen to build in the last twenty years. Homes that were not in the moderate affordable housing bracket, they chose to build. Homes that were. In the high uh affordable or the high income uh bracket. Therefore, we now have a this. This supply shortage of homes, starter homes, and I did, I also looked at uh homes in in uh for sale in Centerville. Uh currently, Centerville is by all, by all definitions, not affordable. And we're not going to affix affordability here by doing land or having zoning, it's just. Changing zoning and and putting in apartment complexes, it's not going to happen. Uh even townhome projects, uh new townhome projects, we're talking uh some. New townhomes that were built in Bountiful just recently are are listed in the five hundred thousand dollar range, these are not affordable. And so. Changing the zoning so that we can put those projects in is not going to change the problem. So, so I would rather support and uh and the the people of the city. And their desire to not change the dynamic of their town than to support what the city, the state is pushing down our throats. And that's where I'm gonna be in this whole process.
So Chris said something that I agree with, where we have the land opportunity is on the west side, okay? Gina said something I also agree with as well too, I uh learned this very vividly in the summer. Uh it's all about homeownership to retain a community that uh where you feel connected. Now, not to say that we shouldn't provide for renters because.
We we need some of that.
My hometown as well too, because I wanted to be in my town, but. But uh the concern comes in is projects that are built. By not only the publicly held Blackrocks of the world, but many private equity firms here in Utah, started by many people from Centerville and Bountiful. That are turning this all into renters, okay? Uh so as we did look at our land use development, we need to to create situations. Where people can be owners as well there.
And I agree.
With the possibility, and and that's why we have on the west side, I agree with Gina, what we do have there is most people are leasing. It's not the freeway, they they're 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 just leasing. We just don't, we don't have homes out there where people, can you think of anywhere west of the freeway? Because because West Bountiful is right next to those, and those, but just as you get through that roundabout, they feel part of their community.
And and can I add to that, and and this is uh part of that? If if you don't redevelop the industrial. You will not fix the problem, the reason is because they are an island. If you start to add more residents and more community and allow property ownership on the west side. It becomes a community part of Centerville, if you leave in an island and you just continue the industrial, they will stay here forever.
I'd like to answer two of the questions that's been.
Can I just finish up really quick, I I have one more thing, I just wanna say that in the in the plan, it does give us. It's twenty seventeen stats, but it does state a kind of a percentage breakdown of. Of the total residential units, and I think that if we were to continue the same. Percentage of these, that we may be able to get away with some of the development that we're talking about with higher. Density, uh single-family uh was approximately seventy-one percent in twenty seventeen. Townhome and duplexes consisted nineteen percent. And multifamily consisted of ten. Uh with that.
Is, okay, can I just clarify, is, when you're saying this is the general plan, is this the one we currently have in place, not Chris's?
This is the general plan that is currently in place.
And let me just, I don't, I I don't have that with me and I can't refer to it, but let me just tell you, one of the reasons I wanted a completely new general plan. When I was running for office is because part of that was written in the eighties and parts were added, and there is a little bit of inconsistency in that. And so I think it's important that we remember that, yes, I wanna respect all of the residents that are here, we represent all of them. That means there are older people that have been here for forty or fifty years, or maybe their whole lives. And we need to respect what they want, but we also have a lot of other residents here now that don't, that weren't necessarily. A part of that particular piece of the general plan, I can't say what part is what, I don't. I don't know all of those details, obviously, there's some of it that's got some data from twenty seventeen, but I. I just think we have to be a little bit open-minded about that, it's a different community today than it was when that was initially written. Eighties or nineties.
Well, and we can't think that this general plan that we're gonna finish in April is gonna be a living, working document forty years from now. Because we can't, we can't envision what's gonna happen.
That's why we're updating it.
Was we need to keep up on it, and I think, I think in a, in a like.
And that was caught from the original.
Yes, and and in defense of the current general plan, I think a lot of that has happened, but over time. There are pieces of that general plan that that talk about things on the west side that aren't even how it is. And so I think we just have to remember, like it was time to do a new one and to get. I I wanna hear from everyone in our community, the people that Robin knows, the people. The people that um that I'm talking to, a lot of them are worried about housing for their children, and it is a statewide issue.
And I agree with that, we all worry about housing for our children. But I don't think any of the children here want to grow up and raise their family. Even in a town.
My kids desperately just wanna own property, they recognize it may be a town.
My daughter is thrilled that she was able to buy something as a stepping stone.
Right, to get.
But if you don't provide the stepping stone, they can't get to that.
But if we don't have what they want to get to, we can't get to that either, so I'm not saying either thing. I wanted to answer two of your questions, and you said, why is the legislature looking into this?
Well, I definitely told the question.
Well, I'll tell you why most of it, because most of our legislatures are developers, realtors.
Disagree with you on that, and here's an example. When we bought our first home in Centerville, it was a hundred and sixty-nine thousand.
Right.
For a smaller home and a smaller lot than that, that my, that my son happens to be looking at out in Harriman. Uh and they, their jobs are in Draper and Sandy, so that's a great location for them. That home that is smaller and on smaller property is now seven hundred thousand dollars.
Well, I agree with you.
Even affordable.
Agree with the prices, but it's like, like Brian says. These, these people in the state legislature are getting all of this density approved. But they're all high density, I was on the transportation committee when they came in and wanted to put um front runner up through Sugar House. And in order for them to get the government grant, they had to buy all of this land and agree that it was going to be developed in such a density. That it would, because they should have had to build it before, but because they made a deal with them, they didn't have to. Well, guess what the problem is, they thought it was all gonna be people that are riding. The train and nobody is, they're all riding their escalades, because what they build up there is high, and this is what the legislature.
Where are you talking about?
Up in Sugar House, where they took the.
Right, that I I can't answer for that, but I can tell you that my son and my daughter-in-law are all riding the train.
Right, but I'm just telling you that that was their problem, they thought we were gonna get to get all these lower. More moderately moderately affordable things, and what went in was so unreal. And that came back to us at the transportation committee, and the other thing is, at least they're not committing into our community. Yes, for all those people go to church. That live on the west side of the freeway, do you know?
No, I don't really know. They're in our state.
Most of them are in West Bountiful, because West Bountiful came and complained to us when they went in over there.
That was a church decision, that was not.
So, what, can I interject a few, and, well, you go ahead.
Can, but uh I made a commitment to somebody a month ago and I gotta keep it, so I gotta go, but I've asked the. Uh the Council on Summer Days, uh Mayor Prokton, to continue to lead this and. Land use series, uh so keep your mind that we're talking about land use more than housing. And also, uh as we talk about this, just as we can't or shouldn't build uh uh areas. Based on schools that they're gonna deal to, we probably shouldn't do that one.
Right, but I'm just saying, except they're not part of our community, I feel like that's. Part of the reason they haven't got to come into our community, I mean, I was.
I'm gonna support some of the discussions with actual publishing engagement that I've heard in the last few months. That said, going back to what you were saying. For the previous general plan, people wanted this small-town field, that hasn't changed. To that end, we've also heard residents today want their kids to be able to afford somewhere in the community. And I know it's anecdotal to say, well, none of them wanna live in Centerville, that's not correct, we've heard from kids. Who want to stay here, but they can't, because also, as you said, there's no place for them. That i- is what's put us in a interesting position, where if we need to provide this type of housing. It's got to happen inside of Centerville, or you have zero control over it, if you have control over it, you can manage it. That being said, to the point of Sugar House, they build luxury apartments next to transit, that's stupid. Stupid, and that's a zoning issue.
And it was really stupid of you not to allow a transit stop in Farmington and not provide housing, they're changing that finally, what, twenty years later, but.
Yes, the same.
But not perfect the first time through.
It is a zoning issue. If you correct the zoning and what's in your code to say, this isn't luxury apartments, this needs to be X. That's what they will build so long as it meets their performance, what I mean by that is most. Uh developers in the world today that are trying to develop in Utah cannot make, quote unquote. A apartment B-level pencil today, because they can't make any apartments pencil today. Because we overbuilt. And the big issue is there's none of the missing middle housing, and I use that term and I'm gonna explain that term. The the units between an apartment and a single-family home. There's none of the transition, we go from single-family home to townhome apartment, like that's the transition.
They're used to not have to be, the trans, the the starter homes used to be single-family detached homes, and that. Is something that uh. The the townhomes and the condos, they are based upon the pricing that they have right now, these are not starter homes. They are too expensive for starter homes, you 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 put a mortgage for five hundred thousand dollars, plus a. Hundred and fifty to two hundred dollar H O A on top, payment on top of that. Kids aren't, uh young people are not able to afford that, that is not affordable, and so us providing that. Uh it is not going to allow uh kid, our kids to move into the community, that's just, we're kidding her.
Did you hear?
I am listening.
Middle, middle-income housing. That's, that's the gap in the housing.
That's what I said, and Nelson Homes, I went to a a a symposium where uh Nelson was there, and he said, we. Dropped the ball, we did not build those homes for the last ten years, that's on them. It's not uh our responsibility to uh provide uh housing or or. Affordable housing, if that's not what the people want. If the people don't want it, we don't, we should not have to provide it, we can be. A a community that maintains its character. Uh without having to to do much more than uh change the west side. As far as land use is concerned, make sure that we can protect the lake, uh put in some industrial over there. And uh diverse or uh specify the the zoning so that we understand where our. Four, our six and our eight are, I can't see us really needing in our twelve. Let's see, uh Riviera is over there, our sixteen, and it's. Uh their affordability, there there's something listed in uh Riviera. Uh for three hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars.
There are twelve.
I I would like to continue my thought, because it's going exactly what you're saying. The other part of this, when when home builders develop homes, they build. Basically, a townhome the same size as your single-family home. If you look traditionally at starter homes, they weren't three thousand square foot homes, they were a thousand or less. But because of zoning regulations, most cities in Utah. Don't allow less than a certain amount, and therefore, we have disallowed the the starter home. In our zoning. That's why I'm saying you go back to zoning, if you allow for an eight hundred square foot home. An eight hundred square foot townhome, that price per square foot. Let's say it's twenty-five hundred and it's ten dollars per square foot, obviously, that's not the reality, I'm just doing math. That's that certain price point, you lower it from twenty-five hundred square feet to eight hundred. It's now affordable, and I agree, people want bigger homes, but I'm sorry. We are in a culture and a society that wants more and more and more, and we have enabled it to happen. But if you can't afford it, you can't afford it, so what you're gonna end up doing is either living outside of your means and going into bankruptcy. Or you find something that works, but if we don't allow with something that works. They move out to Twilla or out to Syracuse or out to somewhere else, which is fine. They move out to Twillah or out to Syracuse or out to somewhere else, which is fine.
For me, for, from our perspective, from a Centerville resident's perspective. It is fine though, I think.
My child.
That's your, who I raised. And I'm entitled to my opinion now. Well, that don't, messing with my phone. Uh, I'm gonna say this, that Clinton, uh, Clinton just approved a, a development that will allow for homes with, uh, garages as their affordability. Type of, so, yes, I agree. That if we are to look at homes that are affordable, we want to make an area that is affordable, we may wanna look at uh, smaller homes, uh, maybe not mandating a uh, a garage, but allowing for a lot size that would enable the future building of a detached garage. Those are things that I'm willing to look at uh, in the land that's available on, in certain areas up north. But why are we, again, I'm, I'm concerned about the west side. I think that, uh, yes, the road is gonna go through. Um, but that's an industrial neighborhood and trying to uh, change that into some sort of residential use is, I think uh, based upon what we see in the, in the current general plan. That's not something that our people want.
Yeah, go ahead, stop it. Just sit next to Chris.
Okay, um, FEMA is currently studying the Great Salt Lake, the entire AECom is a big national firm. So we will know, I mean, it might take a couple few years, these terms take a long time. But what they wanted to do was to get a comprehensive plan of the Great Salt Lake because different communities have different lake levels that they're going off of. Anyways, I guess my point is, is that we will know within hopefully a couple few years what the buildable elevation should be on the west side. Whether or not it's commercial or residential. The soil types, so in order to have a habitable, uh, maybe an office complex or a commercial building. The soil types, you know, they, they may need to put in a couple feet of fill, maybe even three feet of fill. But the construction of a, let's say a home versus a, a commercial area where people work. The soil types, they're gonna have to be similar, whether it's residential or commercial. So we're not, both the elevation and the construction is gonna have to be suitable. I, I say that so that, well, ba- basically the elevation is going to be similar to the elevation of Legacy Highway. That's probably a pretty safe bend. And again, we'll have to have several feet of fill, but whether it's commercial or residential, it will be buildable. With the soil types and the lake levels. Um, it's just a matter of getting enough money to fit the property, clear the environment with, with the wetlands. I just bring that up so that.
Can I add to, a little bit to that with Kevin? And you can totally disagree with me if you want, but um, when I first started at the Division of Water Resources, I was doing modeling for Bear River water coming down into the Great Salt Lake. And there is, there's actually a law on the books right now for Bear River development of water. When I was doing the modeling, they had in some cases back to nineteen-twenty, a few um, meters or, you know, a way that they were measuring the water and, and calculating that flow. Uh, most of what I was using was from nineteen-sixty to nineteen-ninety. If you look at the tree rings in Utah, going back to maybe the thirteen hundreds and there are some trees that are that old. That was an incredibly wet period of time for Utah. So the lake was high, but it was also, it's some of it is a little bit mother nature. And if you talk to people who are, you know, worrying and looking at the Great Salt Lake. Some of it is mother nature, but it's not necessarily that it's all being used before it gets there. I mean, that is a lot of it too, but there is a little bit of it. It's just a drier, we, we are drier than we initially thought. I mean, when they start putting these meters in the rivers, we didn't know that that was a little bit different than, you know, maybe the last thousand years before that.
Yeah, FEMA is being criticized a little bit by the way that they're studying the Great Salt Lake because it's so low. But basically, they're saying, look, we have to take a snapshot of what happened in eighty-three and eighty-four. We have to take the high lake level of forty-two sixteen, whatever that elevation is. And we have to add a couple feet of wave action. A foot or two of wave action. It will probably give a reduction of a foot or so because we have the dike and the sheep row. So it's basically that static level, even though maybe it won't get there, maybe it will. Plus the wave action, minus the reduction for the, that's gonna be Centerville Cities. It's not gonna take into account any stream channels coming in. The elevation will be based on that snapshot of eighty-three, eighty-four plus the wave action.
Which is, which is totally, I, I mean, obviously I don't wanna like, we don't wanna put ourselves in a situation where we're in trouble. But I do think, I do think there's some slightly different information now as well. Because of that, like, you know, what we think is like, uh, uh, we are in a drought. It is significant, but also it might just be that we didn't understand what the normal amount of water was in Utah to begin with.
And one other thing, the state has been pushing um, regulation through the last several legislative sessions for recharge and push water back to the lake, which wasn't a historic thing. So we're actually recharging the lake faster now than we were prior to that.
I would say that the state is addressing affordability because every community representative is going to the legislature and saying affordability is an issue in my city. And my cities or your cities aren't addressing it collectively throughout the state and therefore, because there are individuals that take the notion of somebody else will take care of it, we're all trying to push our responsibility of growth, which we collectively have throughout the state and our sister cities, which doesn't work and nobody wants to take responsibility for it. And therefore, the state is saying, hey, if you guys can't get along, then we're gonna tell you what to do. That, that's the first thing. Right, when you say, hey, uh, it's five hundred thousand dollars for a new townhome in Banff. Yes, it is. And it's not affordable. I don't disagree in what in my presentation, I said, we can't really control price, but we can at least affect one of the mechanis- mechanisms of price and that is supply. So to say that if I can't get to an affordable price, I'm not gonna develop anything is act- actually counterproductive. Based off of a free market price.
And, and to go back to uh, affordability, what actually affects affordability is the size of the unit. The materials used and the total supply.
Yeah, and Chris made a great point because that is you can have the same footprint on the same parcel, let's say it's an acre, but you have twelve or fourteen, eight hundred square foot units that is a starter that would be priced less because of its size, as opposed to a fourplex that is four times, you know, you're talking a, what is that, uh, well, hundreds, uh, twenty-four hundred square foot space. So you can create those measures and that's a discussion that we can have, um, as to, hey, we'll give you a density incentive so long as we're meeting maybe some affordability standards or square footage standards, so it fits some of these housing typology units that somebody could get into. Is it their first uh, purchase? I don't know. Is it their second, third stepping stone purchase in their equity stepping level? I, I hope so. Sharon, you've been really quiet.
I have been.
Do you care to comment? Are you just happy to uh, be a, a spectator?
Um, I first want to celebrate that it does feel like there are things that we agree on, as I've been listening to this, which is good. Um, it sounds like there is support for your proposal to be more transparent when it comes to density on our maps and switching from residential low to an R four or six or eight. So yay, look, we have some some level of, of common um, consensus there. I, I feel like I'm kind of in the middle on this one and, and because I, I don't think that I think that while we represent our citizens, I think that a general plan, our goal is that we have to look for the future too, right? Our job is to plan for the future. And I don't know that planning for the future is, we don't wanna change. I don't think that's planning. I don't think that's, I don't think that's responsible planning for the future. But I also don't, I, I also don't think, nor do I hear anyone in this room saying we wanna fundamentally change who and what Centerville is. Right? I don't hear anybody saying that we want to fundamentally change who and what Centerville is. And so I think that we can look at places where we can add um, housing options. That maybe if it's not quote-unquote affordable, it's at least more affordable than what exists. And places, the, I'm, I am not opposed to looking at the west side for putting in housing. I, I don't wanna just jam all of our affordable housing onto that west side either. I think that that's I don't think that's responsible planning either. I think that that will create a whole other set of problems. Um, so I'm, I'm open on the west side. I'm also open to finding appropriate places even within our existing city areas where we might be willing to um, go a little more depth. And I'm not saying like, let's just start slamming into, you know, our twenty density anywhere. Again, I'm not hearing anybody say that. But I'm open-minded enough to look at, to say, I think that there could be places where we might be able to open up the reins a little more. Gradualism, right? So that it's someplace that's a little more dense. Won't fundamentally change the character of the community, but it will provide those housing options for people. Um, and I appreciate that you identified areas, specific areas. And Spencer, I, for what's worth, I didn't take your proposal as saying, here are all of the things that I wanna do, all together.
That's why I put a lot of question marks behind things.
So I looked at, I looked more at your list, not as like, I wanna do everything on this list, but hey, here are some options. Maybe we can consider doing some of these. And I, I would not be supportive of doing all of them. But I think that there are things on your list that I might be supportive of looking at.
And that was what I was saying earlier on when I said, I think these are important areas to have a discussion. It doesn't mean we're changing anything.
I gave, I called Gina today, I said, hey, heads up, I'm gonna put in a option for attached housing.
And I, and here's the deal, I, do I, you may, you may have gotten the impression that I totally agreed with Spencer or if you were thinking, he was thinking all of these things. I'm probably a little more on the conservative side, but I am definitely open to making this plan. It, it does not matter. Robin, has the city changed since you came on City Council? I mean, yes.
Yes, it has. You've improved all sorts of housing developments.
That has changed.
Where, whether we like it or not, the city will change in twenty to thirty years. We have an opportunity here to make, to have these discussions and you know, obviously I do care about what our residents currently do think, but I also want them to look towards the future. And so that's, so you might think I'm just like all, you know, I wanna keep the character. And I talked about this when I said it. I said, I wanna keep our character and our small-town feel. If we don't start having this discussion and, and I know we're not gonna agree on every point. But if we don't start having it and trying to find something that makes some sense for the next twenty or thirty years, it will be thrust upon us and the decision will be made.
Well, and when you said it had changed, and I said, no, I feel like we have added to our city, but I don't feel like the city itself or the field has changed. I've had people come and say to me, thank you for what you've done. We're not more salt lake with apartments right in downtown on the sidewalk. We're not Banff where you drive down and it's just walls of apartments. Thank you for what you've done while you've been on council. So we have, we, we've done, we've done a lot. We've done up at the Dix market, which we went a little dancer. I was happy to try and get some more affordable up there. And when the neighbors came to me cause I had been involved when at one point it would have been allowed that seven-story building could have gone there. And I can't remember what the density was, but Corey told me it was humongous. And so I'm like, look, we're gonna give you this. And it's so much better than what you might get if it's not to live, develop for ten years. You better jump on this because you don't, you're telling me you don't want this in your neighborhood. Well, you really don't want that. And so that's but the other thing I wanted to add on the west side and maybe other places is I think after being on the council, I've learned that we need to bargain, you know, the hotel cake. We said to them, you bring us a hotel and we'll give you these uh, uh, apartments that they wanted. And the guy was standing there, I could still see it like it was yesterday, and he said, you got, I said, but you don't bring the hotel, we don't want the apartments. And he says, you got nothing to worry about, that hotel's coming. And I just had an overwhelming feeling. And I said, wait a minute, we're gonna change this. You can build the hotel, you can build the apartments once you've got the hotel partway done. And his face really changed demeanors at that point in time. And Corey called me two weeks later and he brought a plan in for the apartments. He put the hotel on, but he was gonna start building the apartments. And Corey said, Councilwoman Mika will fire me tomorrow if I approve this. And we didn't get the hotel and we didn't get the apartments. But I do think we need some tax base. I do think we need some incentives. So if you'll bring me a great tax base, I'm willing to give you some higher-density housing.
And this is where the discussion of the west side came into play. One of the reasons, uh, yeah, when this got put out, one of the big components of it was where are we gonna develop our economic base? It's not happening on Main Street. Nobody wants it there. It's not there right now. You currently have an economic base in your commercial core. There's some infill opportunities that we've been talking about. And, and that's what we're proposing in the general plan. The only other place that's not single-family that would potentially make sense is the west side. That's and, and, and what will happen, and, and you could probably speak to this better than anyone. If you want commercial, the first thing that you're gonna hear a developer say without hesitation, we jerk reaction were the rooftops. Every time. So if we put residential homes over there, commercial can come along with it.
And you actually create some vibrancy where they're not just, they're still part of the city, but you're creating a base of additional population where you can create a little bit of a neighbor sub, you know, neighborhood feel on that side. If you, if you don't do anything else, you will have left them stranded there. But if we allow for additional housing units there, then you're creating a sensitive community. Maybe there's a pocket park, which we have planned a little bit further north that they can utilize. Okay, well, some kind of green space. Pocket parks, small park, whatever, some opportunity to recreate uh, in that area.
So, a- and correct me if I'm wrong, but do you see any other spot in the city outside of infill and existing commercial core where economic growth is a potential? No, right? So if that's the only place and the development.
Those smaller pads that I was suggesting. Yeah, you're talking.
And to your point, if you're gonna build those apartments, you better build a hotel. Leverage certain things. Don't give it all away. You can do so much good over there. And, and more often than not, the way that cities leverage it is, oh, we want it to look really nice. Really nice means really costly, and that's where you get the Escalade drivers that don't use front runner or tracks. Make it so that it's affordable to the certain demographic that should go there, as opposed to being a luxury apartment. Make it a normal apartment. Does it need to have seven pools and all these other amenities? No. And yet that's what a lot of cities continue to push because they don't want those type of people in their community. Well, those type of people are in most part children.
Well, I'll back up and say that those type of people are the people that sit around us right now on our staff. I give I find it repugnant at best when people say those type of people because those type of people are the frontline workers, my daughter, a nurse. It is our city public works employees. So I take great exception when members of our community use the term riffraff, those types of people, et cetera, as it relates to housing prices. I think it is, it's disgusting. Continue that. Sorry, I was a very big soapbox and I'll get on it.
In no way are we proposing the west side to be all four story apartments or whatever it may be. We specifically chose two land use designations detached and attached on purpose. To allow a wider range of unit types over there. If it becomes all apartments. You guys messed up.
Well, that's I, that's where I'm thinking, can we come up with some common ground on that?
Yeah, so from a.
What Robin is saying about hotel before the apartments? Let's get our ordinances solid enough and that comes from having a really solid general plan. Let's get our ordinances solid enough so that, you know, I mean, I think it's great that you. Recognize that and realize that and that's just hardcore experience, right? You'd seen it happen before. And so in my mind, I'm going, that's where we, that's the, that is a gift that we could leave as the council. To our future residents is that we make sure that we, not that we wanna. Like stop anything from growing, but just like you said, we want that economic vibrancy to also be part of these developments.
So from a consultant and a staff perspective, you heard some spirited discussion, what what feedback? Do additional feedback do you need for this?
So be specific. Don't know at this point, I never shy away from these. Uh the the questions that I still have, based on the discussion today, the 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 way that we have addressed it. Based on the feedback that we received from residents is leave the east side alone. That that, I mean, that's the generalization, leave the east side alone as far as land use. Oh wait, we have a west side, that's essentially what we got, so that's why we were saying, hey, this is a really good opportunity. To get the economic growth, to get some affordable components. And to increase the opportunity for residential development while maintaining the core feel of what Centerville is. But in this discussion, i- i- it seems that we're a little split. On whether the west side should change at all, should we continue it as the way that we are or should we redevelop it heavily? I need clarity there because at the end of the day, our goal is to try and bring everyone together. To create a a guiding plan that unifies the city as opposed to tearing it apart. So that's one thing, west side.
So let's talk about, before you go to that. Where do we feel on west side? So we can give Chris and staff direction. Can we go individual?
Yeah, I I am supportive of that, one of the things that um.
Just part of what Chris was saying.
Yeah, well, I'm. Yes, and I do like the attached and detached options. Um, I I think Spencer, you and I had a little bit of a conversation today. And you talked about like you gather these parcels of property to create a better type of development. I, you know, I'd like to see, I mean, can we incorporate some of that to? You know, either A, create some kind of transit development overlay that, you know, involves, you know. Commercial aspects, housing aspects, I. I would like to see if we couldn't, you know, I I think this needs to be carefully planned and I think if it is. We won't have a, you know, an like a half acre here and maybe one over here and they're really not connected. I mean, I think we need to really think about how we can make this a plan that is, it does create a really nice community.
It's a regional growth plan, that's why I hear you say.
Yeah, okay, yes.
So I. I'm kind of in the middle of both, I agree with Brian and yet I agree with the others, I know we need to have some growth. And I don't think that is part of our community over there, I don't know whether. We can ever make it be part of our community or develop it to where it becomes a little more of its own community. So is a community as opposed to just some high rise apartments. I want to definitely get ourselves tax base down there. When you say, well, I wanna say it's attached or detached, so up at where the fixed market is, which is up on, you probably don't know. Where I'm talking about, but it's fourth east and you know where it is, okay, so. They would have loved to have done attached and we pushed, so they had to do um not attached. So I'm concerned that if we just say, well, either attached or or unattached, we're gonna get all attached. So I would be more concerned about getting some tight neighborhoods. Something more like Riviera Town Homes or something, but that's not attached, some more that are up there too, so that. You maybe got a community that's got more like Hania has got the different, the different kinds of things. So I want to become, get a development down there, I don't want it to just be, Corey used to say to me all the time. If you put all your apartments in one place, you're gonna create a blight right there. And that's where he was really concerned with putting any more down here on the south side because we have. Cedar Springs and we have all of the cook apartments and the, all of those that are on there, I mean, if you go from. Porter's Lane to Parish Lane, it's almost solid connected homes from Porter's to Parish. Along Main Street, you've got Cedar Springs, you've got uh uh Bessebrook. You have all of those down there and so he was saying, don't put too many there, people don't want them in other neighborhoods, so that's a problem. We actually ratio for the state we are higher at, which might surprise everybody at um. Apartments isn't exactly the word. But that type of the town homes, yes, we are higher ratio to homes than that, than we need to be for all of what the state is requiring us to be. So Sarah actually has to be, I don't know, but Corey brought all those two, it's a little bit ahead on all of them.
Yeah.
But a suggestion, uh there is a.
And the difficulty with the moderate income housing plan, that's essentially what we're talking about. Every year the state essentially changes it and and your previous work that you've done is more or less discredited. So you, if if you were really gung ho with the first round, you're sort of behind the eight ball future because you. Done way too much in first, which is is incentivizing communities to do less.
It's actually what you're reading out, you know, that's how the future is working.
Fran? Do you recall what they were talking about with the next moderating policy plan yesterday?
Recall it better tonight.
But that, yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Thank you, okay.
That they're, they're talking about revamping it, like they're sending overhaul to it.
There's gonna be an overhaul and they're gonna say, hey, if you wanna adopt some of these options, then you won't.
Sub, it's a sub menu and if you do a sub menu like a transit oriented development.
Yes.
I believe President Ford again is sponsoring that legislation, so you'll do that, I can't believe it.
So which is why I kinda wanted to bring it up, cause I do think there's a, I mean, it sounds like we ought to have that discussion and just get a little better understanding of that. With them next week.
So coming back to our. But you don't have any, you're not showing any detached on the west side, just to be clear, on the current land use plan.
No, and part of the reason is.
You can't really, as it relates to the west side, I just wanna be clear that there'll be different. I think what Chris said, there's different housing. Typology, but as it relates to detached, from a professional perspective, I don't know that you'll have. Detached homes on the west side anywhere.
That's what he was saying.
Because the cost, and again, we just heard, I, that's why the raise that whole area and to raise individual, single family homes, it's. Doesn't make any sense cost effective wise, so that's why we're showing attached on the west side because realistically, you're not gonna get detached.
But what Chris is saying, there's a variety of uses within that attached, attached isn't. All one part.
So, so you're talking like maybe some of those like garden that are three or four stories and you're, and you might be walking upstairs to your unit. Or and maybe there's some town homes or.
Correct, exactly, so you have those types of mix of uses as opposed to.
Mixed residential.
Okay.
Correct.
But but it would, it seems to be a tax mixed residential.
Yes.
I do think, I I don't know how familiar you are with the Pioneer Gardens. Kind of area, but because that was a nursery, I think they actually were able to do some really cool things in there, which is why I think it's been a pretty. It continues to seem to be a nice area.
Yeah, so what you have there, again, this is Spencer's rough calculations. But so you have the three to four story condos, which are.
Which are right on fourth west.
Correct, those are about twelve and a quarter, again. Mike, you're gonna, Mike can work through that with our G I S department, but then the town, then there's the town homes that are like ten and a half. And then there's the single family, which are five and a quarter or so.
Yeah.
So those are the detached component and then you have the kinda duplexy attached or are they fourplex, I can't remember. And then you have the four story condo, so that's your kind of variety of typology.
And I know it's been about fifteen years. And it does, in my mind, it's still continues to look like it seems like it's staying in good condition, I don't see it becoming lighted or.
Mixed residential communities hold greater value over the long haul of their life. Than any other community types.
Okay.
A- and the reason why is because you have different life ages in it, if it's all single family, you tend to have. Uh new neighborhoods, new families move in, their kids grow and then they grow old in that house. And so uh speaking to, like you mentioned wards earlier.
Yeah.
Certain wards will. Huge and then shrink and almost go to nothing because it's it's. Um too mild culture.
The life cycle is the same, right?
But if you start to introduce mixed residential communities, you're getting all age groups and you can stay in your community, like, oh. Without growing stuff, we need a rambler or we need something else.
So speaking of Bessebrook, we've had people move into the single family home neighborhood and people moved from there back into the. Into Bessebrook and I I think that's one of the, and frankly, I absolutely love that we have young families there. Because we are in that, what you talked about where people's kids have kinda grown and now. It's becoming a smaller neighborhood, like just, you know, houses are the same, but less people in the neighborhood. And so for me, I'm like, I do love that mixture.
And they're safer.
Yeah.
So uh so let's, let's go back to the round.
Yeah.
Where do you stand on the west side discussion? I I know you're leaning both ways, but but. Do you support the land use adjustments on the west side or should we maintain what's there?
I think we could do some, I don't want to go. All gunning home with apartments over there by any means.
Yeah, and 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 we will put in the.
There, I would like to do things that might make it more of a community for the people that live there. Cause I don't think it is, it's interesting, cause I don't remember what the issue was, but we had several people from over there come to one of the city council meetings. And almost every one of them only lived there part of the time, like I live in Colorado, but I ran here cause I worked. I was amazed at how many people down there didn't wanna be part of our community because. They, they're there just, you know, I don't know how they can afford that.
Are you speaking, uh, okay, so there's a couple of different, right, developments down there.
I just wanted. Almost seems like it was the parking or something that we were looking at and so they were coming. But but like I said, I was amazed at how many didn't even consider themselves Utah residents. But yet they were living down there and they came to our city council meeting, that was a real eye opener to me. Because I don't feel like it is a community, I'm like Brian, I don't think that they're.
Uh, cause they're isolated.
Corey was, um, when we did the, the one by the map, that went in with the Maverick. Legacy Trails, yeah. When we did that one, he was like, it really is a disservice to this. You know, one by the theater, Legacy Crossing. Crossing Trails, okay, so he said it is a disservice to crossing if we don't.
But you got the Maverick to go with those.
Yes.
That's what I'm trying to say is.
So that's why I would say if you round the board. I like what Chris has here because he has this mix of community commercial with a residential overlay. He has attached housing, he has an employment component of it, so we have a lot of good uses, I think. The generation forty years from now, if we can secure a front runner stop that's electrified, will thank us. For, because again, our Centerville. Davis County, Utah will not be nearly the same as it is in forty years.
Do you know why?
And they will, they will love being able to use transit.
Yeah.
It will be excellent.
They will love that stop. Because Salt Lake City just recently removed all of their parking requirements, so.
Yeah, that was about a year plus.
We might come park in downtown Salt Lake today for super, not, not like a couple of bucks, if you go to City Creek and you're there for.
Yeah.
Over two hours, but but that will not always, that will probably. There are a lot of places that the parking is gonna go.
So thinking to, towards the future, I completely, I supported that.
But I don't want it to allow for it to all go commercial, cause I go residential, cause I think right there, that's where the money is. So if we say you could.
That's implied. You're not gonna get transit oriented development if you don't have the people that are going to use transit.
If you look at the way that we've developed those land uses, red is the ground. White is above, you have to develop commercial in that area, but you have the opportunity to put residential above.
Negotiation.
Yeah. So with that said, uh correcting me if I'm wrong, and and this is in the interest of time, we're coming up on eight. Um, if I understand you correctly, you're okay with these land uses so at, so long as it's not all apartments. And there's some mixes of residential types, is that correct? I I agree hundred percent and that's why I said, if it's all apartments. And commercial, if it's all apartments over there. This is bad. As a whole, and that includes me, we've failed.
Cause you need services to support.
You gotta have the service.
It should not be all apartment. So I'll take that as we leave the west as is with the caveat that we need a range of housing types. Spencer, where do you stand?
I just said, I'm supportive.
Okay.
I'm concerned, I'm concerned about the lake, uh we talked about it going, I talked about it going up. You talk about it going down and you can say that uh people have been saying that there's gonna be. Uh toxic dust from the 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 lake and so are we gonna be sticking people out there, allowing them to move? Out there and we know that there may be some health issues, some health hazards, the closer they get to the lake, I'm concerned about that. So I would actually need not just uh assurances for commercial development, but. Based upon the general plan, they also need to uh make sure that they have. Incorporated green spaces and uh maybe possibly some sort of water features and and things of that nature that will. Uh maybe help mitigate some of that potential toxic.
I love it, you love that. This whole green space, uh and this was in a discussion that he had recently with some of the people looking to get some funding. We are, uh, we were proposing that this entire west side be a wetland park, open. For these gap, so if if you remember that gap, uh open face gap analysis, if we were planning to put. A park here, but as we talked about it and and with the lake, we're expanding that to the whole west side. So that would help with water quality, that would help with mitigation of any flood hazard on the east side of that. A- and as we've already heard, no matter what happens on that west side, even existing development needs to be raised, to be.
We, we even talked about filtration ponds and the federal government might be able to assist with filtration ponds.
Funding.
Going into the lake so that then public access like fisheries or urban lake use.
So knowing that we're already proposing what you're saying, does that change your thought process?
Uh it 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 leads me to being more uh willing to talk about that land use as being. Uh some of it being residential or as uh we've been discussed, yes. I I would, I would think that P O Ds that would uh have a diversification.
Yeah.
Type of uh typology that we've been talking about is important. Um.
Or a T O D, P O D or a P U D or a T O D will essentially do that same thing.
Correct, uh a- and as we are looking at trying to attract those uh potential. Uh train stops, wherever that might be, is it behind the the theater? That where it was proposed? Is that where it was proposed? Originally just there by the theater, but you know, if that uh centralization of people changes, that may change as well. I see that you have this um, these lines over, it's what we do call of our industrial island. Is that where you were proposing some sort of the residential, like a mixed use type of.
So that's this residential overlay, you can see that, that's what that is. So it's commercial underneath the front runner station, the pins would go in that little purple, I want you to see that that well. And and that's because you're taking a stand or I only allow insert window and that's. Purple is right there, all of this is red with a residential overlay, we have residential overlay here, uh, and that's.
Is that south of the theater?
It is. Yeah. This is.
Oh, that's west of the theater.
Talked about that.
Uh, so the little, the one in the light blue is just south of megaplex.
Yeah.
It's that little tri- triangular foot thing. Got jam capital piece, that's the only, that's got a residential overlay, and then, and yes, and then the other one is the T O D on the north side of parish.
Right, and then there's, yeah, exactly. So a- and this looks like it's orange in this, but this should be red, we've, yeah, uh, this must be an autographic. Um, then I didn't search out, uh, and this was the only change. So it's red on the ground floor with residential, but so that's what that's supposed to be, it's it's commercial on the ground floor, so you're getting your services, but then you're allowing for that mixed use component, especially where intensity is necessary and required around.
I I I think that I I would be supportive of this uh, this industrial neighborhood to kind of give an upwind rejuvenation, if you will, with some mixed use and some residential. North of that, I I I mean, this stuff, the blue, the larks, those are a couple of parcels there. Uh, I would be willing to be more like Robin in that we need to put some conditions in those developments, but I think that it would be.
Yeah.
Open.
And and that, that is something we can bake into the general plan, like, I I don't know what your conditions are, but I, we don't necessarily need to iron out all those today cause you don't know what they're gonna be.
You could have policy guides or documents for staff that will be employed for those conversations, you could have army general areas, you could have even something codified with code base for certain areas, it just depends on how you want to approach it, so there are three or four methodologies to get what you want.
At some point, can you explain to us what the various uh tools are in that toolbox?
Yeah, and the bottom line is obviously if you codify it, it's it's like we were mentioning, it becomes hard.
I was gonna say, I understand that part, but maybe some of the other options.
You can't build the apartments unless you give us the hotel, I, if you look at these commercial ground floor with old residential overlay, it is, you give us commercial, you get residential overlay, like if you don't do ground floor commercial, you don't get residence, like, that's a hard. And but yeah.
So how do you do that? So there was a parcel on Main Street that that was actually being looked at years ago. And the builder took me to lunch, I wasn't on the council, I had nothing to do with the city. Um, and said, we can build those as foundations and not put anything in them for what we can sell them above. So it wasn't, and then I came and talked to you about that Spencer, and you said the same thing, you'd helped build one somewhere in another state.
Built residential, my first.
And you said, but parking terrace, but anyway, it, you know, that would be my concern is, I don't wanna get off an empty building, and I mean, it's like over where the J C Penney's building is, it's a full gym because they couldn't get anybody else into it. But they got all of their residential, they didn't need to have anybody in those buildings.
This goes back to what he was mentioning earlier, i- if you just take parcel by parcel and one, buy that one little parcel, incentivize buying multiple parcels, the bigger that development pad is, the better that development type will be, and it's easier for a a bigger pad to get the nice commercial users in that attract other users. But if it's just like one little one off here and one off there, that's where you start to run into those difficulties.
So Chris, I I don't, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Robin, but I think you might be referring to the Brighton potential development that was on Main Street and it was basically a city block, they wanted commercial on the basement and townhomes above. And I think that was a row or something, and then behind that, there was gonna be a few little.
No, there was no single family, it was all that, but they just said, it was, and that, I look at that J C Penney's development and it's a pretty good sized development over there. But they, the value said the same thing. They as well, they made their money on the residential, so if there underneath doesn't have anything in it, they're okay with it.
Is there a way to deal with that? Like, is there a way to put some stipulations or requirements?
And you don't even have to require, or you don't have to allow that necessarily, that type of development, you might have horizontal mixed uses too, you don't necessarily have to accommodate vertical.
Okay.
Uh, and you've got to be careful with that because there are certain developers that will take advantage of you with the, with the horizontal, like if it's vertical, uh, it's it's like that segment is commercial. This segment is residential, but i- if it's horizontal, like, oh yeah, yeah, we'll build that at certain phase. And then they end up putting it in the spot where it doesn't make sense, and then they come back and be like, well, it doesn't make sense here, so why are you forcing us to do it?
You originally negotiated, that's why, that's coming back to having.
So here's.
Maybe Robin's suggest, you know, she said, we want the hotel first before the house.
That's what I'm saying.
I think we need to have some of that, because I can, I agree, we do, we don't wanna have, I, it wasn't comfortable to me the Brighton development to have just a bunch of empty residential, that's our main street.
The tool or the benefit that we've got with this most recent legislative update, when, remember when we did the update with the code with the development agreement? Development agreement can become a land use tool that becomes codified. That's where we now have an advantage that we have to have before, have this conversation, so there're gonna be guys in policy line documents that we use for those negotiation processes, that can then be rolled into a development agreement, and both parties agree can then become basically codified and legitimized as part of that process.
And as we're looking at master plan communities, sometimes a a home builder will come in and say, hey, we're gonna build twenty units before we build this park. You could do the same thing with commercial, you're capped at twenty units, and then that commercial has to be filled before you can build twenty.
Yeah, make trigger points and make that part of your development area totally viable.
Yeah, so there's a lot of different methods to to hold to that and and keep them to that agreement. Again, in in the sense of time, like, let's jump to the second question, the second question that we did not touch the east side, it got brought up uh by a few different individuals. Looking at strategic locations on the east side, is that something you want us to do? Uh, and this can be a simple yes or no. Yes.
I I'd at least like to have the discussion, I don't think it looks the same as the west side, it might be way.
Pair down.
Yeah.
Very strategic location, maybe two.
It it wouldn't match if if, if we're doing graduated continuity, like I suggested, you wouldn't have west side type of development on the side.
Yeah.
Yeah.
For sure.
It doesn't make sense.
So yeah, I'd at least like to have the discussion, I think it's, I think we need to have it. I I know we probably have a couple that are not okay with that, but can we at least just have the discussion and try to see if there's some options that might fit, like I feel like some of the stuff you just said is new information to me from a planning perspective and very helpful in understanding like some of our options, so I'd at least like to have the discussion.
I would say no above e- above Main Street, because that's really been the set residential above Main Street.
Or east of Main Street.
So so you're saying maybe west of Main Street, no east of Wa- Main Street?
Yes.
If that, you know, if that's the starting place.
And I think maybe a couple of my suggestions were east of Main Street.
And I would, when I, like I said, you know, I don't want all of, I think we need to look at what's surrounding that.
But you need to also look at Chris, that one parcel that you note as residential that is currently com- commercial.
Oh, yeah, he's not listed as residential, but it is a commercial.
I just noticed that as I was.
But that's just like, that's the, yeah.
Conceptually, you already know where I'm at, Chris, cause I've offered those suggestions.
So that's a yes with the graduated continuity.
Yeah.
But see, like where you said you were willing, willing to have those behind your home.
Yep.
I wouldn't be con- I wouldn't be willing to consider those because it is all single family homes there and it would definitely change the dynamic of the neighborhood, but over where Evanson's property is, where it's in the middle of already density, then I wouldn't have a problem with putting them over.
And that's fair enough, and I, I respect that opinion, I disagree, I don't think it's gonna talk about both of them, I don't think it's.
I I don't think that it hurts to look, right, like I I would appreciate you giving us the options to, we can always say no, but we can't say yes if we don't see them, so.
Yeah, and 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 again, we, the intent of this general plan is not to drastically change center, because that's not what regulators want. So i- in that case, we'll look and we'll pinpoint a few different options so far. A- and then it's up to you, if we don't do anything on the east side, we don't do anything on the east side. Um, so that's a yes, let's look at it, what about the west side, sorry, cause I skipped over.
Okay, no, 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 the west side, I'm with, I'm with Gina.
Okay, so yes, to the west side.
Yes, to the west side.
Uh, the east side, I read in the general plan that um they, they uh, the uh maybe a transportation, uh, U T A, maybe U D O have considered that there would be openings for or actually it may even been centered though, in the twenty seventeen update, that they said that there would be some um considerations for medium and high density, high density as we know it. What is that, six days?
Twenty point zero five.
Okay, so.
Under conditional use.
Uh, a long commuter uh bus, I think is what they had considered there, so uh as we had voted uh previously on this uh, uh little vote that we had for the the city, that the route was on the, the election or that uh vote, so going up four hundred west, uh, is that, correct, four hundred west, all the way to Jennings Lane, going past the theater, going past. So along that route, I was thinking, we start considering medium and high density housing from the same pages, and you two, you mentioned that as potentially.
I didn't suggest anything north of.
Well, I I I I mean, south of Port, so south of.
Yes.
And so I was being north of pages to Port, sorry, I was a little backwards, I'm I'm left handed. You have to forgive me, so I think things differently, but and I I do know that there was a little bit of an uproar along that area worse than than recently. But if we were to consider something uh like median density or some townhomes east of the freeway, I think it would be leading into our our commercial uh, leading into the commercial node that we have there on four hundred west from pages to parish and saying that's potentially got some of that.
So you guys say, uh, meaning specifically you two are like, yes, west of Maine, nothing east of Maine. Uh, is what I'm more or less getting, everyone's okay to just look at potential opportunities between I fifteen and Main Street. Am I hearing that correctly?
I'm I'm more on that, yes.
We'll look at those, uh, also, there's, there's a few different routes, potential, one of them goes on Jenny, but the other one potentially pulls you back on Chase, and if you come on Chase, then you keep it tighter to Chase and and Porter.
Traditional neighborhood as much.
And yeah, it leaves them alone, and then it's like schools and things, there's stops up there.
And that may be, a- a- as far as hey, opening up the door to some of those developments, maybe Chase Lane would be a a safer uh turn for that particular uh route.
Is that helpful for consulting and staff?
That more or less gives me a direct.
We've lost trail in about a half hour ago, so I gotta be careful here.
Like the feathering and kind of like.
And and that's smart planning practice, like you're not gonna put a seven story building next to a single family. And if you do, you mess that.
And remember what we're talking, this is, this is a document that pulls last twenty, twenty five years that we can modify accordingly occasionally, but you really don't mess with it except for every five years, maybe checking deep on it and occasionally if necessary. So it becomes a roadmap or a guide to where we want to be, you know, in in twenty forty five, that's what we're talking about. How do we want to see it look? And if you like the ideas that are being conceptually put together, we want eventually be the the permanent reflection of what the city is by the time you get to twenty forty five, that's how you wanna think about.
And and let's assume like to to the point that's been stated, we we look and we find, oh, actually, maybe, and I'm not pointing at anything specific, this is more.
Don't point at anything specific.
This area over here, uh, if it's along the route, that area, let's say this corner gets intensified and then you start to feather out forty years, maybe a redevelopment of some of these other neighborhoods over there makes sense. Again, that's anecdotal, but like, that's the point of a general plan, you can continue to adapt and grow and adjust as the demographic, the opinion and the general public's view changes. It's it's gradual and we're solidifying locations where this type of development makes sense. So that when a developer comes in and says, I wanna do this over here, you're like, no, that doesn't make sense, we have it.
Need the general plan.
No place for it, then it goes everywhere, that's what ends up happening.
Thank you, it's been two and a half hours, I think it's been productive, uh, Mayor had to leave us, so I don't know where your next update, take a look at, based off the suggestions you received, and then obviously you made one report back after the open house.
Yeah, that's a, that's kind of swaying self in back, that's been a roll on you.
Okay, I'll entertain the motion unless there's any other comments, okay, there you go, motion in a second, all favor.